Evening, everyone. We will call this evening's meeting to order. And please let our minutes show that all of council is in attendance minus Councilwoman Walton and all members of our staff as well. And we have one guest in chambers today. Anyone online to show? No. Item three is approval of the agenda for this evening.
Councilor Smith moves to approve the January twenty eight, twenty five committee of the whole meeting agenda as presented.
Councilor Walton will second it.
Motion has been moved in, seconded. Any question?
Question.
Thanks.
You want this? You want this?
This one is.
Yeah.
That's your agenda.
Okay.
One just asks and proposed. Any other question? Hearing none, all those in favor raise their hand. It's carried. Item four, approval of minutes from our prior meeting.
Calper Smith will make a motion to approve the November twenty, sorry, November. January, January twenty, oh, no, it is right, yes. November twenty six, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole meeting minutes, meeting minutes as presented. Councilor Walton will second it.
Motion has been moved in. Any question? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand again. Motion is carried. Item five, conflict with interest declarations. You can see them, okay? Item six is in regard to correspondence, presentations, and petitions, six one, DMS Community Center summer programming plan. We've got Mr. Mike there.
Yes, so my apologies if it was hard to be here, but it's, they're sick with whatever's going around. So news actions I'll, I'll present. If you have any questions, feel free to ask away.
Thank you.
So summer recreation plan for twenty twenty five, third of April. The Harlem Bowl will be set to return in twenty twenty five, and it's after last year, so we're looking forward to that. Pre-training weekend for baseball, softball in April, and they'll likely take the form of indoor football program, some of you doing inside the arena. We're already scheduling and organizing the Earth Day cleanup event for April twenty second. And our winter activity location will likely continue until school year. Kickboxing, sporting nights, minstrels, fun momentum movements, and creation more experiences. In May, we have the Washington Valley Rec Go Girls. We're going to come to Heartland this year. Last year it was the, the, the boys. But this year we got the girls coming to Heartland, and it's a group of three girls from Woodstock and Heartland, participating in a full day of various sporting events. Co-ed softball will begin in May and will kick off with the popular way where the girls play tournaments. And May also the month that we begin our summer registration program. So our council dates, our May fifteenth, May twentieth, and they'll be held at the community center. We're going to have a lot of activity next to go along with the registration to encourage more participation from the public. An act that will also play a large role this year in twenty twenty five, as it's going to allow online registration programs. Again, to June, we're going to be doing a practice school tournament with softball and baseball. This includes a quick chicken run program that started in points before. Shuffleboard's making a beginning at the golf course. What's new this year in particular is we're going to really want to start a three-on-three basketball league. Oh, sorry, what is?
No, will that three-on-three basketball be inside of the?
Yes. Yes, that's the plan.
Do we have basketball nets?
Be highly wide. Hmm, so we're looking to acquire that now. Correct? Um, so three-on-three basketball, even similar to how, I guess, the, the ball hockey league works. To add to the minimum information, future five, a pool set to open, not set to open, planned to be open, third week, which is similar to those past year. Then last two, the holidays, the new school spring day, that they had, that came into your life. Fun parts began Monday, June thirtieth, in the launch of eight weeks. With the new facility, we will be increasing the capacity from twenty-two participants to thirty to encourage a lot of participation from our resident. And I think people will know because it was happening last year as well, just ran out of spots. July, we're going to have a three-nine, baseball. Swimming lessons in swimming team will start in July as well. Soccer season is moving in, so multiple same, kind of same thing as softball, baseball, multiple of these groups have been. Soft in particular, you have three-four, three-fourteen, so it's quite a large group. And this celebration will obviously be at the Dallas Community Center this year. We're going to be a double ticket stand on that and last. Very exciting, some, some of it, already be aware of this, but the MV Special Olympics will be held at the Dallas Community Center. In partnership with other facilities and forces in the valley. But our, our timeline now is July seventeenth to the nineteenth for the event. And I can get more specific, so around my report for that, but that would be in July. The Washington Valley Regional Games will also be held in Heartland this year, and that's on July twenty fourth and twenty fifth. August summer programs, basically, continues, what starts in July will continue on through August. Monthly gift parade in Peloton, with the rich rest and looking to add some additional things to the parade. Second Annual Heartland Sports Fest will be August twenty second to the twenty fourth. Some of the sports and events will be shuffleboard, co-ed softball tournament, swimming through basketball, the twelve-way two run, which will is anticipated to grow pretty good this year. Watch your class, cricket ball, and a twelve-man golf scramble, actually, the coverage of golfers. So we're going to stand on our sports fest as well. And as we get into September, MBBI, they generally start their practice school softball program. Various softball events will continue until the weather turns to be worse, I guess. And the plan currently is to try and get the ice in in September to accommodate the height and end of our seeing from our organizations. There's been a lot of people asking about that time in September, and they wanted, they wanted it in Heartland. Any questions on the twenty twenty five summer rep plan?
So the three-on-three basketball is an adult thing, or is it for kids?
It's going to be similar to the.
Ball.
The ball, so it's not going to be like eighteen plus, but the same.
Sixteen?
Yes. And depending on the band, it might be two, you know, it's hard to say right now, but once we put the feelers out there, we need to be two, eight, three, poverty, eight, or something that, and we will. But right now, we sixteen plus.
Will there be any opportunity for coaches to take clinics, like soccer coaches, that are getting into coaching, maybe their kids for the first time? We're going to try to set something up for maybe some clinics to.
Officials.
Officials, yeah.
Yeah, so. Having a meeting in February with Washington Valley Rec and found, and I've already taken the public this year. The soccer program in general has been a bit of a reach the wing, I guess. Thinking, they're trying to get more in line with some of the other recent organizations, like instead of, as an example. We'd say nine U, I would say eight-nine, so they're trying to stay consistent across the board with some of the things they're doing for soccer. So in that, there's going to be a new development program, is what I understand, but I'll have more information in February when I have to, to wrap you.
Excellent.
John, just one question, generally, no, I see. There's, this is a lot of programming, yes, impressive, and I want to thank you for it. What about, has there been any interest for events, concerts, genre bingos, wrestling, boxing, amateur boxing?
I haven't had any specific requests. I've been trying to, um. What I need to do is just contact the musicians that we, that go, you know, say, less than, it's on the box, and and just see how you can accommodate that at the arena, and how the Saturday work, and so on and so forth. But it's not saying we can't do it, just legitimately, I need to. Figure out what, but the plan is to expand on special ones such as concerts and so on.
Do you have Corey Cross's contact information?
I do, I still look into that.
Good. And I also have a contact for the Frederton Wrestling, whatever they're called, the Wrestling League. I'll send that to you.
Great.
Capital City. Capital City Wrestling, yeah, that's what this.
Actually, on that, I, first, on first of all. People highly involved in the boxing league, I guess, to be that normally have a nice attitude all the way. And I think they thought we were going to go in the future there to do that in the summer, so. It's a far time.
I think it'd be, yeah, I think it'd be great to have during a big bridge fest, something like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for John? Thank you. Item six to property value valley Kansas corporate. So this is just information you should ask. So the event is happening February seventh and eighth at the Forest of Vermont Club. Deadline to register will be standing right thirty-first, which is this Friday. Enter X team or go, so no experience required, that's good news. Contact Forest for trolling, so there's the contact information there as well, so. That's one way to support the, enter support. Item seven, administrative reports, seven one is between the county or the legislature.
Okay, good evening all. I had submitted your report in your package. I will go through some of the, what I consider the highlights, and if you have any questions from there. Definitely open. So one of the biggest things was the, in December, we actually received our debenture from the municipal borrowing award for the one point eight four zero million dollars for our compacts. Our twenty twenty five payment will be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars approximately on that. And the additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was approved for borrowing against this project in the fall will be debentured sometime in the spring, so it will be the May-June timeframe, but we will do that. Complex updates, so before our December tenth meeting, we had, had a lot of discussions with our auditors going back and forth about the complex and what we could do and would have to do for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. So we have spent a lot of time, again, bringing the complex up to date, and that is included in your package as well, and I'll talk to that in a few minutes. And what I would consider number twenty-three, of course, is that we are getting ready for the twenty twenty four audit. And we hope to actually submit our time balance to our auditor to begin that process by the end of this week. So that is key. Gas tax funding, so we had, we've had a number of discussions with Dylan. And Jed has been very instrumental in helping that, then again, today, Eva's today with Michelle. We met with Dylan again, they agreed to come up and visit with us again today, so we have a lot of priorities that they're looking at. And some changing things that we'll be bringing forward to the Finance and Infrastructure Committee meetings, and we'll also be bringing forward to these meetings for council as a whole. And I would also consider, one thing that was a surprise at the end of twenty twenty four was we did receive a performance refund from WorkSafe for eighteen thousand dollars. And WorkSafe has indicated that the, for our type of industry, we will be at a down ten. WorkSafe was in a good position, and they're actually giving employers back some, some dollars, so we received eighteen thousand dollars of that. So we put that against our twenty twenty four income. And of course, the largest expensive note for December was, we replaced the tank on the comfort, and that was a twenty-five thousand dollar cost. So again, looking at the complex updates. What we have done, we've added a little bit of information for where we feel the deficit may come for the complex for twenty twenty four, which is down because some of the changes that we've been able to make and the accruals that we've been able to make. We'll, we'll be pretty close to a break even. Right now, it's only about a five thousand dollar deficit for twenty twenty four. But that does carry over, puts, we know that some of our costs now are hitting us in twenty twenty five. And we have about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in remaining costs to come in for the complex. Jed, John, and I, we've had it done this morning, we're reviewing all of the things that are left to be done for the project and ensuring that we are on target and following up those vendors. We did get some good news for some additional funding that looks like it's going to hit us in twenty twenty five for that particular project, as well as the ongoing commitments for donations and sponsorship that we already have lined up for twenty twenty five. So right now, we are looking at a forty thousand dollar deficit if everything stays as it is. But again, we are continuing the fundraising efforts, having discussions every week with any partner that we can to hopefully eliminate that by the end of the year. That is our goal, and we're all working hard towards it. So I did update December. Operating for, our general operating and our utility. Both of them right now look like they will come in at a slight surplus. But again, we have to go through our complete audit in order to make sure that that is going to happen. And some of that is because of all of the things that we did in December to try to make sure that we were looking after things as best as we could for both our general and our utility operates and the campus, so hopefully that stays. Let's see, and we're lining up. When you go on to your general reserves and just a little bit look at our cash flow, you will see a, a big difference in our cash flow that we have shown for the last few months, and we knew that was going to happen because part of healthy good was we funded the overages in the complex that we did not see borrowing for out of our general operating fund. So you will still see that we are, we do still have money to operate above and beyond the day-to-day, for sure. So, but it is definitely smaller than we have been showing, and we knew that. And I have broken it out into, so that you can actually see the cash flow in the complex a little bit because we're now getting close to the point where we will be shutting down that, that bank account, and moving all of that, that, all into the general. So we're starting to finalize all the pieces of that, as it were. If you have any questions, I can clarify any points you may have. Right.
Questions for a trade note? Was it very nice? Item seven two, for corporate words and partners. Good start.
Evening, folks.
Evening, Jen.
Almost on the new highlights, so streets and roads, the DCI meeting. We have organized a meeting with the DCI superintendent to address a number of things. There are several important being one of the big ones, our chair of roads, one, one five, a bunch of other things. And our committee will be attending on that one. The guardrail boat, so if we were to use that boat and fix that guardrail, it is approximately hundred, or nine hundred and forty feet. If we look at it, forty thousand dollars to replace that.
Is that from the hill?
Correct. For water and sewer, the Dylan, Dylan report, we have some full speed into that here today. We have Dominic from Dylan talking with us about the tarloes and the funding that was available. Michelle, Tina, and myself, with our team.
Well, friends.
Yeah. So we were in on the meeting, all in the meeting today with him, and, and looking at it, not just technical or what needs to be done, but where we're going to get the money, what money we did have here, budgeted for it, so. The very productive meeting, I, I think, was, hopefully, we will have more for our February twenty eighth. Or short, it was eighteenth, meeting of the finance and infrastructure, our loss for Florida, with that. Channel properties and green space, streetlights, then request for streetlights on all right, for water.
Question?
Yes.
Whereabouts on all right? Do they want a streetlight?
The entire thing.
There?
The entire street.
So on in?
Yes. Which is ten poles, nine, recommendation to you folks would be that we would do every other one, is just what we have on each street. It's quite common practice to do with the other, a lot to do with one.
Would, would it be our responsibility to put a streetlight in there for them? Why don't they?
It, it's not, it's from the mass of the more recent developer on that street. And one thing, it's somebody for here. I would consider that turning into a bit of a, that field department. So it could be something that we could look at to help stimulate or help the planes grow out there. So, and that's up to you folks, if it's later on here in the, in the council. And then hopefully, the last road, last, move proper, set that one. Adding another pole, which turns out into a much larger capacity.
How come they can't go on either one of the poles on both sides of the road?
The one on the further outside is, is further away than the intersection, so you're not going to get much light in the intersection. The one, it's toward the intersection, going up the tent. You have a lot going on in that pole. You've already got a transformer, you've got wires coming from port directions. It's going to be very hard to accommodate a light on that pole. And I, I will warn this, that we have one of the best that I'm aware of on this. If we open this up, we could open that to it.
Oh, here's the issue, and that's why I brought it up when we were talking about taxes.
Yep.
Coalstream gets their lights paid for. So why can't we have lights? That's what, that's why I had the problem with bringing all the taxes at the level base, because Coalstream's receiving services that other LSDs are not, or former LSDs are not, so this is where the problem's going to lie.
Up until this tax year, though.
Up until this tax year, right.
They did pay. Actually.
But they don't this year.
I guess, council and all.
Because now it's saying that, okay, we'll let Coalstream have them, but we're not willing to do anything for any other places.
To be fair, we didn't say that we would let Coalstream have them. We had, we inherited lights.
No, but we as a council voted to keep, to bring all the taxes at the same level.
Yeah.
Because it's always been that Coalstream pays three cents more because they have streetlights. So I have to go back to people in my ward and tell them that we're not going to give you a light, even though we're paying for the ones down the road.
To be fair, I'm not saying, and I'll do it, and do not. We need an additional pole. We will be in an additional pole, which will be additional cost. And every light is, that's a toss of about two hundred dollars every year.
Seven ninety-nine a month. Right, it's a dusted on light.
No, it's two hundred dollars a year, which we will get into. I'm not sure where you want to do this.
Yeah.
And it's for our.
But what's the size and food, the cost of the pole?
That is not. If, if they were to add a pole on that particular intersection, that is not for the cost.
So Jed, you mentioned that there were other requests that you were aware of or thought there would be kind of, or do not. How many requests there would be?
I know one, others for sure, but I think if we open this, if we open it, there's an argument to be made that there's a safety factor to every intersection.
If, if we put a pole in, it's our pole, and if it doesn't belong in me power.
It's in me power, it's pole, it's a, yeah, it's utility too.
Would it be, would it be a valuable exercise to see how many troublesome or concerning intersections there are? And maybe finance and infrastructure could address them?
Has there been any thought to putting a dusted on light on there? Because I know, because I looked into it, they will do it for seven ninety-nine a month, and they come in and put the light in. And they're the, they, they would have charged you anything for installation, they bill you seven dollars and ninety-nine cents a month to have a dusted on light.
Probably for an individual home.
Yeah, I don't know, right, yeah.
Because, because these are, they're the same ones, they're, they're identical, though if, if I called one of my backyard, it's the same thing. Right, they're just above the cell, light that comes on, those care. That, that's coming up later, so I don't know if I'll be able to do it.
Yeah, well, that's one.
The farmer's market, we reviewed the sign for the farmer's market. We're, we're doing installing two, one at the market itself. Cazebo property, we need to name that part. As well as there is a wayfinding sign currently in the Charles Allen Park that will be eliminated now. It's a, most of you noticed the new wayfinding sign. Even being the old one, which we're bringing up a pole and allowing us, we'll, we'll put it there. There's also in the budget, we do have up to two thousand dollars for seating, so that was a concern that's brought up. I haven't got it yet, carpentry is next semester for the school, which is coming right up. I think it'd be a great idea to perhaps purchase and supply some of that, then build benches or, or efficiency favors.
But we have no place to store them for winter.
Correct, we never have. They've, they've always lived outside us.
Would it extend the lifespan if they were inside of the?
Yes, but we're talking a monster's building to hold everything we have that means.
But these ones could be put in the gazebo for a minute.
Yes.
Not really go prolong the life and.
Quit helping them, yes.
And anything that, and our last section would be.
Yep.
Might as well.
Yep, most certainly. Shop machinery, the JCB, so spoke, can't remember what meeting, spoke on this, talked about an older back of the API that had some troubles. The owner of that reached back up to me for sale, we traded it on demand, and that fell through. So they reached back up to me, it's still up the grabs, had two guys up yesterday have pictures and a little more information. So we're, we are investigating that at this time, and I hope to have again on the February eighteen meeting some more information.
Does it look promising?
Actually, yes. The, there, there's, there's good parts to it, so.
It's a motor.
The motor's, the motor's good, the tires have less than two hundred, not to put in the, the details, tires have less than two hundred hours on them. There was some work done on it here in the last two years, so it's, looks a lot better than last, so I think we can, we can make one of it to. For the DMS Community Center, ice maintenance, it's ongoing, this one's a rather big one. We're, we're shooting for the inch and a half ice. We do vary in that, it doesn't stay very consistent on that. You'll, you'll get an inch and three quarters, so you'll shave, you'll measure again in a next quarter, so it does fluctuate. But we are staying on top of it with the routine, you know, the schedule and, and maintenance being performed. Feature plaques, I don't know who has or hasn't seen, but they have started. We have the center section completely done.
And they look nice.
Yes, very proud of how they turned it, so kudos to the ones that planned and organized that. And then coordinating with contractors, still. Uh, and then, uh, coordinating with contractors, she's still. Definitely slowed down, but it hasn't stopped, we have, uh, dollar renovations there currently, uh, with the saw and siding. Uh, we had first pitch doors there, uh, last week, putting the shutter up for the P M team. And I talked to Brett Sperman, sorry, I don't know the name of this company, uh, the gentleman. Uh, uh, the gentleman that made the flooring for us, uh, he will be back on Monday to start the tonning, uh, the showers. Faces, you know, protect some aggression when the water is, you know, so. They're all on their own with that along with, you know, the smaller things, so. That's all that I had for highlights.
Could, could, could we clarify one thing, as I talked about earlier, just per council, item number one four? Uh, they have not used a hundred and thirty-eight tons of salt in the roads. Since November the first, just to clarify, they ordered salt, brought it in, they didn't on the road, so.
Our, our shed is full, and I don't, I, I didn't think of that when I read the, uh, the report, Mr. Britton approached me today on that. Uh, and I don't know, but I, I would put a fair guess that we should probably go ninety down on the ground. Or, on, so.
How much?
About ninety pounds.
All right.
Nine, be nine zero. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jed.
I am seven three, I'm director of facilities and recreation, John Ibro.
Um, so I'm gonna do this here, um, one point three, oh. I'll put it on active net, so, active net launch, um, dodged here with our, uh, our new P O S system, so. Um, residents are able to pay, um, your down town call, I'm actually gonna do that. We, uh, credit our government, knowing that it opens up in office for residents. Twenty to twenty twenty-five, we're going to be doing the second phase of active net registration. So residents will then be able to go online similar to our neighboring municipalities and build programs, um, rent ice. Book community or fitness room, um, and register for the, uh, things like fine card. Uh, all through an online portal similar to our neighboring municipalities. So what we've been doing now, um, on a weekly basis is meeting with the folks at ActiveNet to build a platform, basically. And our goal I date set for, uh, sometime in March, um. And we are, we are working towards being for that right now.
So, are they paying now? If they, they would be thinking of being involved?
Yes, yes, yeah, well, not now, but yeah.
So will they pay just the deposit or the settlement?
They would pay the full amount for the, of the time, but they want nice, like, situation. They want to host a birthday in like, in two hours, and they're gonna go on active net, so today, sudden time. And they for two hours, and you're like, bitter than.
Was it not in front of them?
Those brands are going to be second, that is what I mean, active net.
Thank you.
No, but you may know this, I don't know, with active net, is there a cost for each transaction that's put on to? Either us as the operators of it or the rental or the purchaser?
I don't think it's too boring that, but yeah, studies.
Uh, well, I'm just wondering if that's built into our pricing, okay, cause that is, yes.
Uh, and then, uh, we probably have to start it up, and then, you know, straight shooting numbers, but, um. So our own shelter margin would be in a, um, body weight fitness class, uh, P P M class, I guess. Starting, uh, February third, and I would be running every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and this. That's the immigration side of things, we're already gone through the twenty twenty-five plan in. Um, they have a community center, this is just basically to expand on the, um, the maintenance and. Um, our, Jed's movement has been during that facility, but in terms of general operations. The, uh, walking track, obviously each highlighted facility has been very popular in these years. Um, every time you come in there, you can't read how many people are using it, we still can't read how many people are using, it's a very nice surprise. Um, a lot of compliments on it, and a few times, they're generally early morning, right till. Uh, about one o'clock, and we see a little bit of a wall, and then it's jumping in the evening around, um. Gaming practices and games, it's been, I mean, that's like this.
Jumping ahead, I see if, have there been? Complaints about the temperature?
Sure, yes, yeah, I've been through, um, and, um, I would address that as. The, uh, the daughter comparison, the jump, uh, so.
Yes, uh, and, yeah. I, I jumped ahead on you there, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay, I'm gonna get your name.
Uh, you were talking, you were talking about the water threat or the walking back, so I thought I'd get.
So, um, yes, I mean. A lot of them in the barn, right, uh, it's, it's very, it's very comfortable in there.
Nothing like the barn.
Yeah, it's, it's very comfortable in there in the sense that, um, we have a nice warming area in the lobby, which is something we've never had before. Um, track, new rooms, fitness rooms are, are warm, and in the general arena environment of the walking track and bleachers. We are comparable to our neighboring facilities. And we're averaging between, right now, with this cold temperature, we're at thirty-five and seventy degrees on average.
I just find it amazing that someone would complain about the temperature in a nice place. When they're on a walking track, uh, just put my next question in. Well, it's minus fourteen outside right now, so walk a, walk a little, uh, walk a little, a little warm up.
No, it's not necessarily the winters, and, yeah, but, um.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, it's okay, like I said, I was gonna get hurt, but I'll, um. Uh, um, I apologize in case, um, anyone else who signs coming up, um. Every so often, so there is space available for those listening, um, so that is great, it's great to see. You know, contributing and, um, and so on, we, uh. Think I mentioned more about change tables for those listening and everyone here, uh, change tables in the facility are located in these lower dressing room washrooms. Um. And then, as I said earlier in my record, in the solid plan, the N B special exhibits are going to be coming to Western Valley this year. So on, um, July seventeenth and nineteenth, uh, they're going to be coming to, um, the facility in particular, and I met with Debbie Graham. This past two weeks ago, I guess, and she, they're interested in hosting the opening ceremony on Thursday at the facility. Uh, they wanna host, uh, they want to host the bar sheet event on Friday, and softball then on Saturday. And they want to hold their holding banquet and dance as well at the facility. They suspect that the event will be bringing about two hundred and fifty people just from their organization, participants. And then obviously I suspect there's people we haven't, we haven't watched the event, so, um, it's very for the community, I mean, this would be, um. Um, a good time for all the athletes to be part of the new facility in this first year, and, um, we're looking forward to it.
Uh, Joe, just to address your three point six.
I'm six, yeah.
I was up there, uh, at the gig, uh, two weeks ago for, you for feeding, and. Popped through the clock and suddenly announcing, and the only question I would have, and I popped to, to Greg Walton. Helped us, cause on the night that, that council Walton used fire chiefs and war. And Laura, I think you were in the Saturday, it was very difficult to hear on Saturday, but what was being said. Because the, what's going on is the speakers are up high pointing towards the bleachers, which is great for the bleachers, but when you're in this war fog. There's no sound resonating back this way, so as you're announcing a number for fifty, fifty, or for a penalty. You can't hear, the only you hear is like a muffled sound because you're on the, or in the sound box. Cause it's going out against that wall and back, so the only, the only question I would have is. Whether V U A and I know budgetary constraints aside, maybe even to put one speaker facing, Saturday is facing to more square. Uh, box, in particular for the microphone. Not so much the music, I think music kind of is loveable that way, we all know it's music, but just maybe something that would be pointed, cause, uh. Greg, um, uh, we couldn't, they couldn't, and I couldn't hear, uh, what I was saying, I couldn't hear, it was.
Right, so, the answer, the short answer is yes, we can do that, um. The longer answer is how, obviously, that's created into the budget and so on and so forth, but the system is designed, you can always add speakers to it, right? So in this particular case, it wouldn't just be for the mic though, so if, if, if it gets added to the system, it would just be forever to have, right, so.
Be perfect.
Yeah, and there's, and there's certain ways you can, and maybe, and sometimes it's just a way of battling with the controls, um. Because you can control the volume for individual zones, so there's zones for the stands, and those little speakers you see there are right over the bleachers. And then there's the zones for the cluster that sits right above the ice, so that particular instance, it might have just been a matter of turning down the stand, stands, and turning up the cluster.
I didn't even, yeah, I couldn't.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, it could, it could have been three foot then, we weren't aware, but it was still around in the system to us. But in terms of adding to it, you can't do that.
And you're right, could be a sign.
Yeah.
I just think maybe if you got some time, uh, maybe go down there and just test it.
Yeah.
If you're talking, you say, could you, look, could you hear what they're saying? There's a lot of people, uh, spoke up to this, and that's, we didn't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, a great, I mean, a great comparison to that, um, people with the open eyes, right? Um, I know there were a certain amount of people that had to spoke hearing when they're standing on the glass on the reduction work, right? Cause that was defined glass, and it's the opposite end, right, um, other than that, um.
It is also harder to hear if you're standing on the opposite side of the stands on the walking track. Cause I was there for opening night, I mean, you can still hear, but it's, it is very uncomfortable, cause it's all going that.
How much are initial speakers, I'm just curious, you said, yeah, most speakers, I, I have it right down, uh, uh, piece paper, I don't have it defining. Um, but I, I could look at that and see about some additional, um, facing the, uh, the opposite side, right? And, uh, we can kind of go from there, but I.
I'll, I'll let you do things.
Yeah, yeah, but no, I mean, it, it, you can add to that system, but, yeah, um.
Can, can I add a suggestion, John, it's just something, with all this being said, I know from being in different facilities and new facilities. That three things come into effect with music or sound or, or vocals, it's. When, whatever device is there is a mixer, whether it's a small mixer or whatever, most people don't learn how to run those and. For whichever setting they want, for music, for vocals and so on, and there are probably, you know, half a dozen to ten people locally between. Uh, Florsial Bristol and here, that have specialized sound degrees that are really good, but aren't very expensive to come do that. Um, just something as you settle into all these discussions, it probably wouldn't hurt to do that, and then just to have a little. Page one, page two, page three for both, for whichever people in the arena are going to work with the sound.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Lord knows every school or reorganization I've been with, training three or four people, and then they move on, and then no one else is around to look after it. Uh, just like that, a lot of new technologies, so those are just some things as you work through the tweaks and fixes that. Um, could be a suggestion to help out with everything we're, we're hearing, and they might be less expensive than adding components and pieces.
Yeah, absolutely, and what, what we, what we do have, so we do have instructing sheets located in the, in the, uh. In the time to your boss, um, one of the same time, say, my staff, and they communicate, they know their training, working the time clock. But this particular situation in our facility, they said, I don't know about others, but our mind, nothing is specific, um. It needs any other sound once you start talking into it, right, so, any of the experience, uh, I don't know, so, um. There's a bit of a, a bike etiquette thing, you can make sure it's certain install it in the face, but like. Not to say that contributes to not being able to hear at the same ice, but there's certain things like that, um. But as we go with the facility and get used to it, a lot of stuff will be there, and I'll look into both of those directions, so, um. There's a couple of things I just wanted to touch on, on the operational side of things, uh, we already discussed the temperature, uh, including kitchenette. Um, we are, and you have, they're fully put now, the basketball, put in the space for the facility kitchenette, obviously the canteen is going to improve since opening. But the kitchenette is possibly, I couldn't approach, and, uh, anyone wishing to rent a facility, rent a community room. Induce a kitchenette to prepare food for whatever that, they can have a shot, um. So I have somewhere, uh. I was hoping to, I didn't know if you guys, uh, uh. And. Separate minded, okay, right, and then, okay, so moving on to, uh, operations, general operations. We have, uh, bylaw enforcement, so I'm not with patients, I'll think, uh, maybe I'm gonna put a team to discuss on one concern municipality. And upcoming, depending on which, and I think, uh. He gets recommendations, um, to go, to go through that process, uh, one of which, because obviously he's a third party. And he comes first in mind, he recommended that we get involved with this software. We're called Active Collab, and it's just basically oral, where we can, uh, update on particular cases, post pictures, and that communication there, so it doesn't necessarily have to be. Yes, but, uh, when you're done, uh, been contacted by a property owner on Oakdale Road, that.
It had an ongoing, uh, bylaw violation situation. Uh, when Rob was our bylaw officer briefly, he had been visiting the property owner in twice. And I'm told that our current bylaw enforcement officers that's in place, they've been. No progress made, so my question would be to this gentleman, the next time we're speaking to him, is what are the next steps? Uh, I've been talking to the bylaw debates, that. You know, there are potential for punitive damages to be applied here, so at what point and after how many visits or? Guess what, what, what are the next steps, I, I don't know.
So we are talking about that, and he says, in most cases, it is up to how the municipality wants to handle. Next steps in terms of, and he, he gave the example of, uh, in this, probably particularly, you know, addressed the places, but. In, in the, in the examples of, uh, I'm starting to punish the behavior practices, uh. He basically said, at what point is it, is it time that we're ready for remediation or, um. Basically, the bylaw that property will have to be demolished, so to speak, right, um. He wants to know when can we move forward with submitting a letter and so on and so forth, I don't wanna get too much into it, I guess, where, what you mean, right?
The bylaw was fairly specific, um, so, uh, and I'm not certain how many times this gentleman has been to the Congress. So I'd like to give an update from him and, um, but does our law dictate the next steps for me?
Right, and what did we transition from, or from C A O, um, I'm waiting on a follow-up support, I guess, from having another. Here, with that person coming out, but, um. And I guess, once I have that, we can go from there, but you have no problem issuing letters and communicating that further, right? It's just obviously we, we initiated for the supporter, I wanna come, definitely come down to kind of the process of that, right, so. Uh, and then one, one thing we did mention, um. Was, uh. Aaron control, and how, when, a review of the bylaw to make sure it has everything we want in it, has. There's always funding this, so, so we can, we can discuss that, which all of it, that was from the most recently made. Uh, the next, uh, six point two would be our, um, our E M O situation. So now that we, uh, have a working template, um, I've been affiliated with the housing assessment that has been done. By, uh, N B E M O for our municipality, um, and that is largely complete. Some of the missing pieces I expressed here in this meeting that I had with, uh, Josh and Claude on January seventeenth. Um, basically, communication with, um, our citizens, I expressed it that I've been using simply casual. They didn't hear about it, but they thought it's a great tool, um, not just to reach our local citizens, but potentially to group in. Balling citizens and how we can categorize and basically, um. Use their, for contact method, so cer- certainly like that, I mean, we really liked how we use that platform, um. Kind of discuss specific causes, department, through our, uh, departmental business assessment, uh, we discussed critical points. Standard critical point for any emergency, they said is twelve hours of total power before, I guess, sort of triggering the long and the cooling centers. Certain emergencies, well, they take that and change that, you know, if it's minus thirty outside, you don't have power, it might help only be twelve hours. So it would be up to municipality to ensure that a lot sooner. Um, they said that we should really look at forming a, an emergency organization committee. As well, to help manage the situations, they would go into taking over the, um. Uh, emergency operations center in the event of an emergency, and on the emergency operations center side of things. They didn't normally count all, but due to our situation, power, uh, they recommended some other facilities or. One particular facility that would pass back a power in event of emergency.
I thought Michael always said that the fire. I thought Michael always said that the fire hall was that.
It's not supposed to be.
It's not, okay.
It's not supposed to be unless they have a separate entrance that's separate from the fire hall operations. So if they have a separate room that's big enough for an operation center, that would be adequate. But if they don't, and it's just in the general operating area, it's not, it's not a great.
Okay.
Yeah. That was their recommendation. It should be at a separate facility to ask not to be on emergency services. Um. Mutual aid agreements was another thing that he touched upon, that we should have set in place with earlier municipalities in, in the event of, you know, bridge closure, fire, um, like, um, lines of higher meeting with um, District Carleton North Public Safety Manager and Josh from the N D E M O this Friday to discuss, um, the general general. Seventy-two hour emergency kits are going to be coming out by mail for those, for those listening to us. So, um, the organization will be, um, updated their seventy-two hour emergency kit guideline and send it out to me getting it followed. On the spring, it will be the sharing crisis communication plans for residents and the gathering centers and wanting center guidelines for specific municipalities, what you need, what you should have, produce and balance where they should be. And, uh, they've granted me access to the basic emergency management course. That can be shared with many numbers of the municipal team, remain, um, fired and so on. So I have that link and I'll be with to share that and, uh, to, 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 of course, to get some knowledge on, uh, emergency management. I'll keep for us in very brief, and the, uh, and the trail usage, um, I guess we're still waiting on our response and bylaw answer from the, uh, the submission request for the, uh, motorized vehicle access. But in the meantime, um, to the, uh, the trail groups request and councilman's request, I'm working at an alternate, um, route for motorized vehicle access within municipalities to that people facilities, portion of trail for walking, the literature, uh, and, uh, preservation of that. Probably by thorough summer streets, that was done in, uh, leading the year, December ended last year rather. So, uh, we're in here, uh, probably maybe they told me that, that our answers, probably, I think, on the, uh, summer street.
A lot of it. It's a lot of great information, John.
Hmm. Thanks, very sorry.
Thanks, John.
I'm seven four, um, Director of Community Services Development, Bishop Air, also soon to start. Just put my other two out soon. Uh, okay, so the, my report was distributed to cancel. I'll just mention a few of the items from it. I wanted to give a congratulations to Watershed Fishing Apparel and Company, who were featured in the December issue of Age of New Brunswick Magazine. And the newsletter, the January newsletter was distributed the first week of January via Canada Post. So we were very glad Canada Post, um, were able to get back to work and get the mail moving. That was great so that we could get that out. Uh, copies were also available and I believe still are available at the Dan Ross Community Center. As you come in, there's a table there and as well, we've got some here at the town hall. Um, and I have started drafting the April newsletter, so I'm working my way through that one. It's a slow process. Um, Tina and I met with R D C mid-January and, uh, their department, so that's the Regional Development Corporation. We've got four applications in with them currently for funding. And their department has had issues with, uh, like some H R issues, illnesses, deaths in the family. And then there was the Christmas holidays. They're just really backlogged. Uh, they are escalating our four applications and they feel that we should hear by the end of January, which is the end of this week.
Those are the people you couldn't get a hold of for time after time after time.
I would email, and that's why. It was because, uh, he was out sick and then he was covering for his director who had a death in the family. There was just a lot of H R, um, things that were creating a backlog there. So he is trying to get caught up, but he is escalating our applications. Um, and let's see, building permits. So we had three building permits issued in November and four issued in the month of December. So the total twenty twenty-four construction value was just under six point five million dollars. And to compare that to twenty twenty-three, it was two point nine million, not including the Dan Ross Community Center. Just try to compare apples to apples. So that is, um, more than doubled in, in development of your new year. So that's fantastic to see. Um, it was mentioned earlier, A and D Communications were installing some more signs. So you may have noticed next to the library on one of the decorative lamp posts, there's wayfinding signs that are attached back to back. So as you travel on Main Street, um, in each direction, they would point you up Orser Street, um, uh, or straight ahead, I guess, to the, the different, um, points that you might be looking for, that visitors might be looking for. They are also going to replace, there's a sign when you're coming off of the covered bridge towards Main Street. There was a sign with like little black main plates with white lettering, um, that were on post, that I think it was right on the stop sign post actually. Um, agenda range to get a new post set. So there's going to be a new sign attached to that, but it will still be as you're coming off the ramp. People will be able to see that so that they'll know which direction to go to find, um, various points in the municipality. And, uh, they are working on a sign for the library. It'll, it'll project out from the library building, just to state that that's the, the library location. Um, and then in the spring, they'll do one over top of the town office here up in the peak. You might have noticed there's an older style sign there, so that one's getting replaced too. So anyways, it's a work in progress, but, um, still working away at it. Any questions, Ken Shaw?
All great work.
Seven point five, uh, we have a report from the Fire Chiefs, Roy Reed.
No, hmm, hmm, hmm.
And last question. I just wondered if that varied from an MVA, will it be a black accident?
It's a whatever secretary president.
Okay. Um, last question. At one point, Mike had said that businesses that have the deep alarms, no fires.
Yes.
May have to pay something by.
No.
Uh, that's not under consideration?
Well, the, the chief always said like, if there's more than two falls in this here, they're going to go back and find out why this like the falls along there. But then usually something along with the detector, then they give a fix. And like the Ford yard at one time, they said it was a detector up in the ceiling. But they're going to get the company to come look after that, make sure it listens to the public again.
Cause you have, you have four alarms and fires, but they're not.
Two of them. Yeah.
Oh my, thank you very much.
So there's this one here. Yeah, okay. Okay?
Thank you. Well, thank you for all those reports. Item eight, breaking the business. One is regarding the patent filing bracket. And so when we've had our last meeting report, we've done a nice review of the council, uh, asking for the tax, camp staff to install two signs. Um, so there are a couple of motions there.
It's, it's whether. So the motion would be whether or not you want to add it to the third word of the meeting because council can't make decisions at committee of the whole meetings. Um, that you can have discussion to get a better idea of what direction you want to go in. And then we can add it to the agenda if council wishes. And then we would wait until an, an actual motion is passed before staff would do anything.
So Kurt asked for us to provide signs, it was just for installation. We're, we're placing the signs.
Well, I think we did discuss this at our last meeting in the detail, so I'd be prepared to read the motion. Counselor Smith.
Can we make motions?
No, we're not.
No. We have to, to add.
You can make a motion to add it to the next.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. The Counselor Smith will motion to add the farmer's market request, the next regular council meeting agenda for a vote.
Do we need to second it?
I'll second it.
This motion has been received and sent for the certain question. I have a question. Do we actually have it moved that something be added? We do, okay.
Because if you don't, then it's saying that council doesn't want to add it to the meeting and wants to consider it.
I still question motions in committee or all meeting.
It's, it's no different than if it was a committee meeting, the committee would be making a recommendation to cancel. So you'd move and second a recommendation to be brought forward to cancel. So this is your committee of the whole recommending to add it to the, asking to add it to the regular council agenda.
Thank you for the first. Any other question? We're carrying out all those in favor, see if they're raising your right hand. Those opposed, motion is carried. Item eight two, review committees.
Doesn't matter, I'm going to sit here if you want. So I did provide some information in the clerk's report with some specifics on requirements of committees. I provided a list of the committees that were included in the 2023 and you will report. So council can have some discussion on, since you have a committee of the whole, do you want committees to continue? If so, which committees do you want? Um, which members are you thinking on those? So you can just have some general discussion about that.
Well, I'm just wondering if the committees that Councilor Mike Walton's the head of, if maybe other people should be, if we're going to continue those committees or.
Mr. Walton was the chair, I'll say, of the protective services, uh, in the matter of that kind of. Um, so probably, I don't know that we're doing necessarily brief. If we continue with, you know, the separate committees, then perhaps we would need a chair. But if we're not letting you approach it that way, we would all serve on that committee as council. So I guess that's part of the discussion that we're having this evening, how do we want to proceed with our committees?
But I know it's not a committee, or maybe it is, but the, the mayor serves on regional services commission. Should that not be included?
So she is a board member of the regional service commissions committee. It's not the towns committee. These ones are town, town heartland committees.
You know, I think council can have a discussion about the relevance of these committees. Um, and I know our previous C A O worked diligently to come up with definitions and scopes and, then parameters for, for some of these committees. And, you know, we can adjust that periodically. I think it should be like the strategic plan where we go by an annual basis and, and review that sort of thing. But one of the things that has always played on my mind a little bit is that we have these committees. Um, yes, but with regards to financial infrastructure, you're going to see the minutes in your package and that sort of thing. But is there not a reporting responsibility from each committee back to council? And that's where I think we've sort of slipped.
Well.
In the past.
It's possible that there was some slipping, but the truth is that for more than a year, those committees have not really truly met. Uh, we've had discussions around this table as a whole, as opposed to each committee meeting and then presenting the minutes from that meeting. So I think that's part of the direction that we're heading in, in having all our committees as one like this. So on the agenda, we can have something in regard to protective services and have discussion with that or some updates or whatever it happens to look like for that particular meeting. But you are correct, if we had been meeting individually as committees, yes, reports, uh, of minutes would be required.
So I've given this some thought because I know when we moved in the direction of pay the whole was to reduce the number of meetings. That was putting stress on town employees because of poor parking responsibilities. And also the number of meetings that we were having, uh, as a result of that. Cause you can meet too often and not have enough time to get in for. So there are some key committees that we have hit upon for a few years, the finance and infrastructure, one of them, protective services has been another. But a lot of the other items that we've had around the table outside of pulling our complex together really are, um, actionable items is what I would like to call them, that we as individuals put action. And you know, no different than the group that I meet with intermittently in regards to desired trials. Or a couple of other groups that we've met with intermittently to, to, um, you know, get things up and operational. Cause I mean, I, I meet with the library, I try to be there every month for a meeting, um, to bring their concerns forward and get back to them as well. But there, there's a lot of meetings that can happen that I think are too much for us. Whereas actioning items around the table like we are tonight, if we action something and assign the responsibility to individuals, I think we would be far more effective in doing that than having each one of us attach two separate committees. Cause that's what we've done in the past. We've each been on at least two separate committees with other responsibilities associated. Um, and it's just too hard to get to all the meetings or to commit to having the meetings. So I do think we have to look at the structure and what it is we want to accomplish so that we can, uh, be a little bit more lean and a little bit more actionable. And remember there's, there's six of us as council and mayor at this point in time. That's.
Well, and that's part of, you make a very good point, Jason. They, you know, I think it's the committee's role to take some of that away from council meetings and to be able to report, however briefly, uh, to council. So the council is up to date on it, like later on this evening, there's, you know, something from the finance and infrastructure that can start to refer to all of them.
I think that part of our agenda going forward for these particular meetings, there should be an area for each. Well, we can touch on each committee or what was formerly a committee, but you know, protective services, finance and infrastructure, and that sort of thing. Um, one thing I, I wonder, when you talk about action items, um, outside of staff taking action, what, what action items would you be referring to?
For example, with, uh, finance and infrastructure, not so much lately, but earlier on, there was consultation amongst the committee members and staff members of including members of the public on the committee. And who would do that outreach and should it be done and how would we do it? And, and those types of questions.
Okay.
So some of that would fall on staff, some of it would fall on council.
So for example, if I, if I go back to the committee, uh, the organization of people invested in the trials and, you know, discuss with them, are they prepared to act as a group or to set themselves up as a nonprofit? There are all those types of things that they want to do and contributing towards trail management, maintenance and so on. Just even we've asked at the last meeting, what do these individuals really want to ask to actually? That's an actual item and process to engage in, which is, you know, that's a whole separate meeting away from having another committee meeting, whether it's on the table. So like, I guess that's my part is how often can you meet with other members of the public? And if, and some will be timely and some will be one offs and some will be something that we meet two or three times a year with individuals to bring things together. You know, um, Cardinal on the green is one that I'll be connected to and invest in and surely we work with that. So like just different items like that. Yes.
I think one of the confusing things too is speaking of some of the communities I've been involved with is, is the time it takes to have an extra year in the meeting with the public and the people, you know, what their donation, expectation, what are their desires for parks and trials? And I'm between and I sat on the building development. But then there's a, there's a waiting game where I'm not going to go ask as members of the public to meet every, every month when we're still waiting for our D C to tell us what their plans are. Because then they're exhausting their desires, you know? So I think the, the action age could be, oh, R D Cs gave us a, an answer of a budget. Let's reevaluate this particular meeting with these people, get through our ideas that we have a budget to come and plan. But it's kind of this table would set that and go ask them. But you know, the cemetery committee, uh, probably aren't going to be every month. So I mean, when I look at these categories, to me, it's, it's, it's ludicrous to put them on every single meeting and say, okay, an update for the cemetery committee or an update for the.
No, I, I mean, put them on there. If there is an update, we share the update, not that we go through every item, every single time.
But there are other committees and back to the, to the new categories. Well, I mean, that, that are a necessity to the management and the future of the town. But then, and some of them are, are project based or decision based. And so it's going to be somewhat hard to itemize that. And then what Rob's vision was, uh, to correct with the law and stable was he wanted everyone's input in council on all these committees to have that discussion together of within the reason. So then you don't have Sam coming back and saying, we're going to turn the basketball net and use a, I don't know, a football field, but then our discussion. Well, I mean, that's where I think Rob was trying to get to, not have clerks every day, but we can, I respect all that. So it's, it's confusing to look at these and say, which ones are irrelevant and who dictates what they need and should they need and how often should they need? And it depends really based on projects and, and then you can do it up to time. That's why.
My, I would say please.
Anything, um, I just want to speak, of course, I'm a little biased, but I do want to speak to the finance and infrastructure committee. I do feel with everything that we have going on in the next two years that, and we are trying to get it to a monthly meeting. And I really, really believe that it is a committee that really does function well. And it brings reporting to the council of the whole where a better discussion can be held and a better use of council's time perhaps. Because those meetings have happened because we are, like our, we're, we're on, we have such a lot of priorities right now that are shifting our funding and our, in our world is this happening? And it's important that that continues to be brought forward on a regular basis.
And we, and it wouldn't be very timed by a sense of to have them because we're meeting, when we meet, it's an hour and a half, almost two hours. When we're meeting with the finance and infrastructure committee alone.
Yeah, it's, it's a functioning kind of community, so.
For clarification during those meetings, do you, um, do you make decisions? Does that committee make decisions for council and for the town? Or did those, that information come to council and we make those decisions? Do you vote on?
To me, it's a vetting, like it's a way for, first of all, free to afford, depending on who can be available. Cause everybody could come to the meeting if available. But it's a way for us to at least find out what are the preliminary questions that we should be thinking about? What are, you know, it, it's a way for us to.
Summarize.
It, yeah, it just, and well, take the budgeting process. So it's the first view of the budget and the first view of, of what council may have for expectations. And then when it comes to council of the whole, it's, it's as a whole, I should say. Um, then it's more of a presentation where, you know, half a council already knows a little bit more and could perhaps help in answering questions for other counselors. But I just think it is a very, otherwise what we do is we have to wait for, it, it just speeds things along in a period of volatility.
So when you say wait, you're not making decisions.
We're not, no.
No, no, we don't committee can make decisions for council.
That's why.
We come up with the recommendations.
We think you can, you can make recommendations, council makes the decision.
Okay, right, that's what I wanted to claim.
Right, like we go over it all and then we bring a summary to council to speak to all the items that we wanted to bring up to council instead of going through every single thing. Using analogy with Rob, we do the first three iterations of the ideas and the planning and the prep work and the recommendations. And then we get to a more streamlined version of what we can present, what's like, what could have been five options. Now we have two really viable options, which direction we want to go in as a, as a municipality. So that's, uh, it is essential. And I think the, the hours, and sometimes it is once a month, sometimes it's been three times a month. I mean, we, there were times, we probably met four times in a month just to get things moving. So those are discussions and times that we would never be able to do this work in the committee of the whole. We'd be here till two o'clock in the morning going through some of that information.
And all the minutes are available to the public on, right? So I mean, if they want to see what, right?
Can I speak to the legal side of things?
Yeah.
Then you, okay, so you had, um, said that maybe we could add that to the agenda for the committee of the whole, for the committee chairs to discuss their minutes. So, yeah, it's, so, um, so the bylaw, the procedural bylaw for the town of Heartland lays out what the agenda is. So if you want to amend that bylaw, if you want to amend your agenda headings, you'd need to amend your procedural bylaw. So I would recommend that counselors, council members, um, who are committee chairs can present those at the regular council meeting when counselors give their reports. Instead of doing it at the committee of the whole, if, so that way you just don't have to amend your bylaws. That's going to take two months to amend a bylaw, whereas it's already on the agenda for the regular, um, council meeting. So you could give your reports there if that.
And we've scheduled our finance and infrastructure meeting to be held in the period of time between the regular council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting. So if you were to give a report at the regular meeting, there are nothing stopping us from having a discussion. We're only really in a moment. Forty.
It's the same way that staff do it.
But even though the committee of the whole is the right process is where that discussion should happen. Just seem saying that if I was to stand up there and say, hey, we should make the park a English. And we have a big discussion of why the park shouldn't be a thing, should that not be at the committee of the whole meeting or not at the council meeting?
It can start at the council meeting. It's the same as if, uh, somebody from the public comes and does a presentation at a regular council meeting. Council can ask questions, you can have discussions about what if, what about this? You know what I mean? You can still have discussions about it. Um, anything that requires a decision of council. Yeah, or, or there's information provided to me so that I can include it in your council package at a regular council meeting. So if a, if a finance and infrastructure meeting happens, um, a week prior to a regular council meeting and that finance and infrastructure committee is making a recommendation that council do something, then certainly that can be on the agenda of the regular council meeting. Or if it's something they want to discuss at a committee of the whole, if the timing works well for that, but.
So actually the way it would work, the way we're proposing right now, so, uh, for example, Chairman, uh, Faradari would give his report at the regular council meeting. So if you had discussion, so before the next meeting, which is the committee of the whole, the finance and infrastructure committee would actually meet again and could provide more clarification for the committee of the whole. So it, it keeps everything more in a, a cycle of, of two weeks, really.
So instead of counselors saying, I attended a finance and infrastructure committee meeting and then moving on to the next thing on their list, they could actually give points of it from the minutes that were provided. Like it's, it's similar to staff reports.
Don't we do that now? I mean, every month we have a, each counselor reports what he's done for the month, so.
Yes.
You can do it right there.
That's what I'm saying. That's when you could do it, you could elaborate on your, the, the chairperson for that committee would be most appropriate probably to give that report.
And Stuart has done that before.
Yes.
In his time.
I mean, uh, otherwise the procedural bylaw could be amended to, to add it to the committee of the whole. But I think there's an opportunity for.
So I feel like we've gone round and round to get back to exactly where we were.
Except what committees do you want? Do you want all the committees or do you want just the finance and infrastructure or?
Finance and infrastructure, it would seem, just from discussion, is the one that people would like to have as a separate meeting, a month, a separate monthly meeting where things are discussed, the chair brings back basically the minutes um, to council. That seems to be the one that would be a standalone.
Growth and development will be that perhaps, but it's more project oriented. Something's going wrong with these.
But that would be.
If we get funding for R D C for downtown development, then that committee would kick in again.
Right, and the chair would speak at a regular council meeting during their report.
Cause that's the same with many of the committees. If something comes up that they need, they can kick in and have a meeting about it.
So, you know, as to what Michelle said, we've got a bylaw that lays out standing committees versus other types of committees, ad hoc committees, et cetera. And the standing committee outlines here that basically you need three counselors on a committee. You need a chair, a vice chair, and one other counselor is the way it's worded. There's six of us. So that means do we have two standing committees, three of us to each? Or do we have four standing committees where we all take the role of one's a chair and one, one's a vice chair? Then we've got a third member attending, like whichever committees are the most important, the ones we should put our eggs in the basket with. But the other items, as you see, an ad hoc committee, those are the things we were talking about, they're actual items. They require some attention, some time, but not all the time they're reporting back. So I think we probably need to go back and reevaluate this bylaw to be in line with what our priorities are.
Could I ask that, uh, staff bring up, uh, the descriptions that Rob had developed throughout the meetings that they're still following?
Guarantee you, Frank.
This is, this shouldn't be this complicated.
Doing exactly what we're supposed to do, really. Uh, the steering committee, just for you know, the complex steering committee is no longer, so that one's done. Actual growth and development, I thought it had moved into basically the finance.
Merge with the finance and infrastructure.
Is that not what did happen?
Well, it certainly can. And it did.
This Lee has, the council person has said in on the finance.
Yeah, cause you have, I mean, any counselor can go to meetings, whether you're a member or not.
And, uh, Director Kara has now started to be a part of our finance and infrastructure committees.
To discuss.
Pro, to bring the development piece in, uh, and I'm just adding just since.
And so I was a, to clarify this last one, so, so it does state that council needs to appoint the committees, uh, create the committees, appoint the counselors and the C A O appoint staff to it. So I'm not clear on what staff were appointed to that committee. Um, but staff do not vote based on what's in the bylaws, so approving agendas, approving previous minutes, none of that. Uh, but right now we do not have a C A O in place. So that was why I did include one of the possible motions is to table it, um, for future discussion once the C A O is in place because she's going to be able to determine and she'll probably need a little bit of time. But we'll be able to determine what staff makes sense, who has time, those sorts of things, who should be involved in different committees. Uh, but there's some different considerations.
Obnoxious or anything here, but my gracious me, how did council ever operate 10 years, 15, 20 years ago? I mean, it's all the same. It's, it's not complicated. We got committees, they work, they report back to council, it's that simple. Is it not?
Like I said before, I feel like we've, we are reporting back. I think those discussions come up, whether it comes from the chair or another member of council. Um, we are discussing those things, minutes are being reviewed. Yes, go ahead.
No, no, you, you just, I just, the difference is I remember reading somewhere like the standing committees were to meet at least once a month. Yeah. So right now, we, in fairness, I haven't given a growth and development, uh, meeting, uh, minutes because we haven't met. So there's an example of something.
Have you had anything to discuss?
Well, no, but the way, the, the way the bylaws or the, the protocol is written, I'm supposed to. So this is what we're trying to clean up about, we're not breaking any published.
Right.
Protocols. And the other thing is if we're going to consolidate committees, then we need to do it now and once we have the C A O in place and, and do it the official way. So if someone looks at our website and reads your, or, or other reviews, say, okay, there's six committees or four committees. This is their, their, their minutes every month.
So without prolonging this very detailed discussion any further, perhaps we could entertain second motion that's been presented to you.
I'll take a motion to table a discussion until the C A O is in place so they can determine staff to assign to the committees.
I'll second that motion, Council of Britain.
Motion has been moved and seconded. So any question?
Hold back. Will the C A O also review the committee's structure and parameters if necessary? And what should be consolidated? I think the C A O would have to do that in, if she's going through the process of deciding staff to meet it.
Can you repeat your question, Frank?
Just, are we consolidating committees, changing committees or, or evacuating committees? And should the C A look at that right at the gate with consult consultation?
I think that will be part of our discussion, the C A O consultation is to, as to who would be part of the committee in regards to staff.
Yes.
Right, and as a point of information, I would like to clarify on page 15 of the bylaw that the council may establish and abolish standing committees of council. So it's, it's we of the council that determine, it's not, not C A O.
Any further question or comment? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item eight three, Dan Ross Community Center grand opening plans.
Has Dan Ross expressed any desire as to date for the grand opening? Has Dan Ross expressed any desire as to date for the grand opening?
Not sweet question, no. Um so. I'm really bringing it up for discussion, because. The uh. You, as you know, we're getting toward the end of our our two season in March, we actually be coming out at the end of March. Um Mars can be there, we we get virtual and so on, so we're doing our off, but offs that uh we are looking for. So I asked council, I mean, the town asked council if he can come up with a certain game so we can begin planning the issue. Um I had discussed with um the town about a couple of days in March, whether we could, like a Friday. Um having it on Friday, we're going to be seven to the following week. And I also entertained the idea um about giving a larger grand opening around the fall, March, April, and five. So I think we have a full season under our adults. I mean, some of the things around the facility are completed that um. Have been outstanding, such as the uh the elevator, perhaps. Um little things like that. Um waiting till September, which I plan to have the ice in earlier than we ever had before, beginning of September. And then the water, um grand opening.
Do we want to have the ice in when we do the grand opening? Wouldn't it be better to have the ice out so we could have like a.
It's for discussion.
Yeah, I guess the thought was. If we could schedule some sort of a relevant event, such as maybe a high school alumni gaming or a gaming, we can draw a crowd in. You know, unless you're gonna have a dance or a. Here there or something after, that's a different kind of fish. I just think that there was a lot of people that are buying seat plaques and there's a reason they don't watch a hockey game or anything. Would be kind of a theme. I personally won't oppose with September. Granted, we get the case set myself.
Is that so or I'm not?
I'm not opposed to it.
You're not opposed.
And the reason I say that is is let's not forget that the couple of donors, one including the rocking floor, would like to come. So I I feel a little sheepish calling him to go to the second, saying, can you come March second, you know?
And if and if I may on that, so. I I'm just gonna come out and say, I I am advocating for a September grand opening. And two reasons, one, it'll be your gathering of all of these people that wish to come and walk around. And sure, because it's margin of error, and two, there are a lot of things that recognize these donors and contributors that aren't often in the facility yet. And that might not be done until March. So there's actually considered.
And the other time we said.
Dan Ross about to consult with me?
Uh certainly, yes. I think they'd be open to what we suggest here, and those that officially, they would absolutely.
So we have, we have a phone to knock back. That in the bell, when we want to be helping open uh Dan Ross. And she basically said, when you guys learn to access every day, let me know, and I will help with the planning process on our end. Um obviously, we gave it to her, but um. If we are in agreement and yeah, um. Um councils in agreement, um. I personally pushing for September for that reason. There are things in the building that we want out, so when we buy people, they consider.
We want completed, she's.
But we want everything completed.
Everything.
We are not at that time.
Michelle, you have a point you wanted to bring up.
I I just wanted to mention, I think it might have been mentioned casually previously, but the um M P. The M P's availability for this um because of the assumption that an election's going to be called. Um w- once the election, once Parliament is done being per- roped. If that's the proper way to say it, um the assumption is an election's going to be called shortly after March twenty first. So that means that the M P is not going to be able to come after March twenty first. To a public opening, and I think it's, that's a key person that needs to attend because of the federal contribution to the project. And so that means it's going to have to delay until after, um it's probably mid-June is what the M P is saying, because. They don't know who it's going to be, right? If 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 we have a different M P, well, we can't schedule that in advance for June, so. So that that would be the other reason why.
Were you lying?
Yes.
I will tell me.
Well, we originally had talked about having a grand opening sometime, or February, right? Is that not, is it, and are we unable to try and get something in the month of February?
There's things that are completely, such as the elevator, such as the memory wall. So we're working towards getting done to the official meeting, and if we're left people in there saying this is the grand opening, I personally like to have that done.
And the individual.
I guess like, if I may, some of the people that visit the facility during our public opening. Went about on tours and gathered through saying this is where this is going to be this. Arm wall, this is the memory wall, and the area, it's not area. So if they come back three months later, I would feel.
I also think that in issuing invitations, uh official invitations to this event. They do need to be put out a fair bit of time in advance, because a lot of these people have very busy schedules and. And to give an invitation in January or even, you know, March or April, for a lot of them, they're already. Scheduled for one event or eleven, probably, so um. Once we make a decision, invitations need to be to be set.
Ooh, Jed?
I mean, uh one thing to councillor Walton's uh point is to manage an expectation. The dance or things, uh we would need to look into for a do so, and our current uh safety setup with the water restrictions that we have at our sprinkler system. I'm not sure what we could actually open at this time.
I wasn't thinking of a dance. I was thinking, in my mind, I was thinking of a stage being on the floor. Having all the decorations up on the stage.
Certainly would not be able to do that. We we can look in good if we need your pleasure, um but with our current setup of uh. Light hazards, I don't believe we could facilitate that.
Could we do something outside and then give guided tours of the facility after? Like during, like during rich best?
We could, we could do a ribbon kind of event, event outside, even in September, and then do a guided tour, and to me, you need a, you need a Heartland High School hockey. Because that throws a crowd.
Oh, absolutely.
As well as, and so you need to talk to to coach young and ask them when the season would get underway, and get local team. I mean, we would pack the house.
And and if I may, again, um. We could wait until March, that's it, right? There's always a risky bad weather, right? For September. It's generally the other direction. These past couple of Septembers have been very warm, not, well, warm and and nice, right? Jay said, but um there's that trend as well, that's why. And people are traveling from. You know, other provinces or different countries, that's considered.
So if you're thinking about a high school hockey game, you would have to. Be at the end of October, early November, because they have definitive times when they can play and not play based on N B I regulations, and I believe they can't play before November.
They play exhibition?
Well, you can't have your teams formed, uh because you're overlapping with previous seasons, and they have a defined time when they can start their season, so they can host. Practices and then host tryouts, what if they can't have a game?
Can you an alumni?
You could do alumni. You guys can do anything you want with alumni, the uh. Students may or may not be able to play an alumni game with adults. Right? There is N B I regulations about insurance, so I don't think they can play against adults, so the uh. Your alumni would be former high school, your alumni would be former high school students, right? So your adults could be.
Or you're a first year alumni. Uh. Yes, you're correct. We we we've been doing, I don't know if it's into timing and everything, but. There'd be, there'd be different ways we can incorporate the students, rather than actually being on there, so they could welcome the alumni. Yeah, right, um but again, this is up for discussion. If we present a fast, and I think our student, we always are, when we can uh. You know, hammer down on the date.
Well, if you if you focused on the alumni game, what you could do in the community, where we could set up cables, you could put pictures, uh old jerseys. Of past high school, you know, maybe Sabres or the Huskies of your past hockey in the community.
Yeah.
And that would give people all their guided tours, they could walk around and look at different artifacts or. Like a better bird.
From the terminology.
Have you ever tried to do something similar to the Vonn Coles?
The theme could be more of reunion, hockey, uh hockey reunion in the new facility. And then the alumni game would suit that theme and would draw all the. You know, I think it would be a, say, I had a great idea, like the old Heartland Sabres, we're still senior team, and maybe them against the Heart Huskies or something kind of fun. And I think uh.
It's really three errors, Hawks, Hawks, the Sabres, the Huskies.
Yeah, so there's, I think that that would be an interesting concept, and then you could have it with early September. Um give us time to do it, and it would incorporate the people that, it would be a lot to. Agreed.
With his council's pleasure, you think of September date?
Well, I'd like to, Lee's been the one that's been on the committees, done most of the work. In council on the. Little complex, so I would, I would go with what Lee's vision is of it, I think.
I don't mind meeting John with you on a regular basis uh now, but if you set up an ad hoc meeting.
Well, I mean, I'd uh.
And we could, we could get the air off the ball, um in our own sense.
We could uh.
Uh you're good, I mean, there's one thing not to keep being the wet blanket in the room, but uh. There's nothing out here, but I will present a date on the September ice point. We need to see what we can actually do with that plane. Uh that may be too early. I'm sure to me.
That's cool.
Uh but I'm I'm giving this pretty good.
Even last, last Friday in September is the twenty sixth. But what what I'm saying is, why couldn't we have something? Outdoors as an official opening ceremony, then maybe later that month have, you know, when the ice comes in, we can do something.
I think you want to have, have a rock, because we've been sending this out enough.
Yes.
And we can wait till September.
I I just.
And and even if it's October, but just, we're we're in a harvest. I said, probably need to look at.
No, I'm. I'm just saying we can't, I'm just saying it's something related.
Well, no, but I'm just thinking that aloud, is there's harvest in there too.
We can know that.
It is a valid concern. But if we could, if it can do that, and you know, and we we have the information back at heart.
But like Jason just said, if we're waiting to September, we're stopping us from doing it at the end of October, November.
You're looking to play hockey or have some hockey game of a number of years, they're gonna want to be on those skates a couple of times before they go out and all that kind of stuff, you know? Really, you you are pushing it to November for this kind of timeframe. If you want to do all that, you know?
We have to be mindful of the operating of.
That's right, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Additional month of operating, you know, the facility, yeah, with those compressors running.
That, I I won't, you can add if I was first year in the U S and go search and.
Well, and yeah, and I mean, whatever we do, we won't feel the, we'll savor the moment, I mean, savor the moment.
Okay.
Well, we, if I may, do the first thing. Uh because otherwise, and then we're not to walk down, our waiting room is for the ball.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And to Jed.
Item eight four, municipal grant application to post the symphony string quartet.
So I see the application, I just need clarity. Is he asking for one thousand dollars as a contribution?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Uh actually, he is asking for five hundred dollars.
Who wants to get the.
We have, we have donated before, I'm correcting, come on, we did.
I thought that as well, but it was for a different event.
It was for, it was for Peter Hislop though, he asked for something, but maybe it was canceled.
It was, it was the string quartet.
And it was canceled.
It was the sym.
It's a rag, okay.
Yes, right, it was stacked, that's correct.
But he's had, he's had the quartet in before, and I'm pretty sure it's counted, gave money for it.
Yes, I don't know about the the money, but yes, they did have it in, and they had it at the Anglican Church, and apparently the dirt was.
Well, I thought he was asking for a thousand, I'm sure you.
Uh and I. Talked to him today and um. And so a full sponsor is a thousand dollars, but he's looking for five hundred dollars for a tent.
Yeah, I said five hundred to be a sponsor, yeah.
Right.
So you don't have the record as to what we gave him before?
I could look that up, but it's.
I I believe we offered a thousand dollars last time. For the event.
I think it was, I think it was five hundred as well. Uh it was one or the other, it was as much as five hundred, I know that.
Vice President here, I'm asking for financial support of one thousand as the presenting sponsor.
As the presenter.
Four or five hundred.
Because.
Right.
He's going to provide five hundred dollars himself, so out of his pocket.
So who's paying the other difference?
So he is also going to the other.
He's costing the other people.
Okay, okay. Well, I certainly would have no problem. You know, sponsoring this for five hundred dollars.
And 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 be assured, you know, he he charges twenty dollars if you wanted to go, five dollars for student. That money does not go in Peter Hislop's pocket.
No, so it's gonna go back into his profit.
And his profit or anything like that is all, he's all donated.
Yeah, no, I I know that, so I mean.
But this does go through the grant process, the grant process.
Yeah, so he has actually filled out an application, I do remember with me now, signed off on it today. Um and generally would be brought forward for our government.
Yeah.
For the next.
Do you remember the parameters? Um is there a certain dollar amount that you're allowed to approve, or was it always the a certain dollar amount that the C A O?
There was a C A O amount, but I thought it was two.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that you had, now that I know it's five hundred.
But I will also say it's life budgeted, it's actually one of the line items with a note beside it. Uh because last year he had come forward, uh the council, council had indicated a a preference to want to do it. So it is already made for the management, and just by by the shit, I didn't, uh for grants cultural. Just fully early.
I.
Obviously approved him?
The budget was, but but last year. The, he had asked for dollars for the symphony, they were uh approved, might have been two years ago, actually. And but was never, the symphony never came, so we never approved any dollars for for the grant.
I would like to move that we add the municipal grant application for Saint John's String Quartet to the next regular council meeting. Uh moving by councillor Smith for the amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item five, does this speak like the close for All Right?
So um. A property owner on All Right Court had approached me and asked if council had ever considered adding streetlights um on that street. And uh so Jed and I had done some legwork on that and got some information that's been provided to council, um. But basically, they're they're making a significant investment um in their property, and there's other properties there that are going to have some significant investment. Uh which will translate into some increased property tax revenue for the town. So they are going to be that particular property owner who had requested it, they are going to be applying for a municipal grant. Once they're near completion as well.
One thing to note, I think the assessed value will also change upon completion of the project. The assessed value you have here as of today.
It's because it's partial, yes.
Yeah, so the revenue received with these two, well certainly, will be more than what we have listed. And that is going to be a busy street with lots of heavy truck traffic, and any of us that have built. But I'm trying to understand the lighting was important. And I see no, no reason not to advise putting at least five. And then if we feel the road, it's a busy street, say there's more facilities completed, we can look at adding some then, but I think five was a good number.
And and to add, the reason that he had asked for this request, I I think for me, I always think of that as being lit up pretty good. But apparently after eleven o'clock at night on the Irving and that complex. But apparently after eleven o'clock at night when the Irving and that complex shuts down, all those lights are shut off. Um, so it does get a whole lot darker there, so that was.
I agree with. Counselor Patterson, I think this is a, um, this is an ask that I think should support.
Should we move to bring this over?
There's a motion there.
Let's uh. I can make a motion to add. Five streetlights to All Right Court. The next regular council meeting.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, any question?
Last question.
Yeah.
Uh, my question is if we're gonna put five streetlights over on All Right Court. Then why not make it six streetlights and incorporate eight six and put a streetlight out on Glass Road? That's my question.
We'll get to that one after this.
We're gonna do five, why not do six? Thank you. That's my question.
My question was, um, are we moving to approve the street light request or are we moving to approve for feasibility study or costing?
We are moving to put it on the next agenda, our agenda on the next meeting.
Request on the agenda.
The costing is included in the third report.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item eight six, street light request for the Glass Road, or Glass and Rockland Road intersection. So this is uh. From this form and const of Britain's thought.
I think, you know, based on what the Director of Public Works has said. We can do some investigation, come up with a better determination on what potential cost. Bring that to council uh at our next regular communication and.
Meaning what poll costs?
Poll was.
But are we sure that we're gonna need the poll? Could we not contact N B Power and see if it's?
Five dollars, it's here. That's the light.
No, what I'm saying is that we even contacted N B Power to see if it's even possible for them to put one up.
That, that's.
And they told us that we need to put a poll.
Uh, heard, more important, that, that will be why.
Cause I've called all the people around that corner. Because I've seen that that was in the ask that we. Everybody around that corner is all for it, they would have no issue with it being put up. Well, and, and I think the other thing we have to investigate is how many key intersections, as we said, might we want to do this with? And uh, from a safety perspective, coming to whether it's a T in the road, whether it's a four-corner junction that we have. Uh, there may be others that uh, safety lens likely required and, and uh, I don't think they're out of the question. If, if it's a matter of two hundred dollars per year. For some of these, and yes, you would have to decide what are the most critical areas to, to move in now, and we can't put up sixty. But you might be able to put up five or six or seven.
That's a great second step, we're dealing with this particular intersection and why, after the question was a. A resident that has brought this forward through proper channel. So I, I think I'm allowed to be Director of Public Works and, and follow through with the feasibility after discussing it with N B Power and what is required and it's, it is their order.
I don't need to sway anyone to consider or, or maybe directly. But I will uh mention. It's not just two hundred dollars a year, we spend as we need, need to see if there's a better, but. And I know, okay, I know we just approved for six others, or five or four, uh, but. We are spending around ten thousand dollars.
I know it's forty five thousand dollars for streetlights three years.
Right, so it's not simple as two hundred dollars.
But here's my opinion, I've already said this, if we were gonna raise taxes for everybody and we kept them all the same. That we can't tell one community that they cannot have lights when the other, when the other ones are paying the exact same amount of taxes.
So to answer your question, if I may now, there, um, so none of this is budgeted in the twenty twenty five budget. So when we're making these decisions, you might want to consider making them for twenty twenty six. So then you can start looking at the tax implications and how you're going to treat it. That was one of the notes that I did put in here because one of the things that we're looking at, something particular to Wakefield. One of the things uh that we have is that we have Brighton and Lakefield on the same tax subunit. So you have to be mindful when what you're talking about is, is good, definitely good information, good questions. But bear in mind, none of this has been budgeted for twenty twenty five, none of this.
What does he budget for a tax increase for? Our two. Same tax, we want the same tax rate except on the US. What do we budget for tax increase on any development?
So what we did was we took. Every time that Michelle gets her quarterly report of what our taxes, um, what our building permits are. So what we then do is we extrapolate that into a formula base where we're looking at approximately fifty percent of what is on. Cause we know that that's a correlate dollar for dollar and we did include that in our revenue increase. For the budget, if that answers your question, counselor.
Well, let's just think if assessments for commercial go the same rate as residential. We'll get more. We've all got taxes.
So.
Question cap, uh, directors of public work.
The revenue is included, so yes, that revenue would have been included, but for all of the expenses that we've budgeted, we have to cover. Hmm, this cost was in those budgeted expenses.
I was just teasing, but the tax rate will really be a tie for all of us and that probably the assessed value would be really high too.
Okay.
Uh, comment on your forty thousand dollar light bill, am I wrong to say that if I was the quarter and dusted on like from N B Power and said the residential rate was seven dollars a month? That they changed the ball for me and then keep running, so would this hundred ninety dollar bill include all that? It does, so that bill per light is a hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, you're saying you spent already forty thousand dollars on streetlights.
Right.
At a hundred ninety dollars a piece, so we aren't going to.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Appreciate the reminder that all of these very good and, and probably worthy uh recommendations are not budgeted for this too.
No, but those are things that we, like I've already made a note for twenty twenty six, right, okay, one we need to start thinking about for future years.
And as far as the, the, I know, and this isn't, I'm not trying to dispute what you're saying about their race to, to tax parity in all of our community. But there are things that everybody benefited from in a sense that, when, you know, for Brighton, for example, they didn't have the extra garbage collection days that others did, some, something like. Now, my ward lost a day out of the year and so on and so forth for extra garbage collection. And so we brought that all into parity, but that also allowed us to extend the same identity services to each ward within our community, right? So maybe one area is lights, but another area is garbage and, and recycling and so on, so, you know, we. We're trying to do the best we can to provide equal service.
Well, it all just avoided by just keeping those three cents higher and then my people out there would be complaining that they're not receiving. That Cold Street was getting lights to light up their yard.
And again, when we do the budget deliberations for twenty twenty six, we can definitely, council can have. Their opportunity to, to weigh in on what they want to do with each individual or something.
Yeah, but you don't wanna be saying that, okay, we got a development over on All Right Road that's uh. Putting uh ten million dollars in our revenue, but we can't put a streetlight on the corner for you because uh. That there's nothing really out there, but just an intersection, uh, you go telling someone out in Cold Street that and see where it is.
Nobody said those words.
I know, but there's somebody that's gonna think that.
But, those, just to get back to the lights in Cold Street, when were they installed, when, when did that happen?
So we inherited those with amalgamation.
Right.
And I believe the cost is between five and six thousand dollars per year. Uh, for those three lights. Uh.
In Colston.
In Colston.
In Colston, yes, cause we have suffered the land on each, each one of the lands, but we inherited one from Saint Thomasville.
Is that the one of the junction corner?
Must be.
Yeah.
One, okay, so there is a motion prepared in regard to this request.
Maybe I guess we could turn the lights off on this if we were to move it, um. Counselor Smith will motion to add the streetlight request for Glass Rockland Road to the next regular council meeting, agenda?
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded, concerning question. I wonder. One other possible motion was.
Oh, to for the investigation.
Further investigation.
You could add on the end of the motion that Counselor Smith made to just say, and for staff to do further investigation into feasibility.
Yes, would you like to add that in there now or just say that we did it?
Could maybe, maybe that could be something added to when you meet with D T I, maybe that could be a collaboration with them.
Counselor Smith. Will make motion to add a streetlight request for Glass Rockland Road. To the regular, to the next regular council meeting. Uh, along with further investigation being done by staff to its feasibility.
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded, concerning question.
Sorry, what were you saying?
Director there, I have somebody, you know, to D T I, uh. Questioning the speed and safety, uh, thousand with money that we just want.
They just replied this afternoon, no, I did pop you on that one, uh, it was late in the day. Uh, they said that it is, streetlights are, um, the response, even in the L S Ds, are the responsibility of the municipality to make those decisions. There's no consultation with D T I and they. Have no interest in participating.
Okay. Yep.
We will look at what. Would be your best offer and I'll try to have that on the board.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further question, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item eight seven, Old Hartland Arena scoreboard.
Will that fit in the little gym?
Does, does it work? Up until the end, yeah, up until our last uh event there at the. At the arena, so the request came in, it's not strictly for, and I, I apologize for the wording uh directed there, but. It could, it's not, they're quite strictly coming from the school, it came from the Central Carlin basketball association. They're the ones who are interested in purchasing a bit of any school.
In the small gym.
In the small gym, because um, I guess they grade the, the cost of getting a new one or getting one that has.
There is, there is not a scoreboard in the small gym right now.
Yes. Oh, there is, is it there?
They, they, yeah.
Yeah, there is.
My son used to bring.
That was a question.
Oh, yeah, they do have one.
So there, there, you know, the, the communication with that. Cost either that there is compared to getting one might be more than they were willing to or if they're able to, um, so.
So they want it on the other end of the court.
Yeah, so your cost being available, given our award and um.
That's a word.
Well, so that's nice thing, so it is old, um, the plans that I originally was to go to some family auction, right? As a, as a, as a real piece for the bonds.
Now, I'm old too, but I'm worth just as much as an age unfulfiller, so just be careful.
Yeah, so in terms of finding exact dollar amount, it. I, I, I can investigate that a little bit more, but because of the age of the board and um. The digits not giving you L E V and there's a lot of newer technology, might be difficult to capture, like, that's why I was gonna go to auction, so. I think um. My, my opinion is that if we were concerned about preserving a piece of the, the old arena and having that piece of memorabilia. Lot better in a place where it's starting to see through generations and generation. Um, I gotta mess up the council.
Was it Natalie that contacted you, Natalie Pageant? So as far as I know, the Central Carlin Basketball Association has nothing to do with the school, has no affiliation with the school. So is this something that has been run by the school to see if they even want that big plug in their gym?
It takes a hundred different times, I'm trying to email with us. We, town is responding to the email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
School may not even allow it.
So one of the motions um for this particular discretion is to table it until we get more information.
Yeah.
So that might be the best way to approach this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and just with that note, if you're, you'll have to talk to the school, but I assume the principal of the run this by district facilities, especially if it's an old piece of equipment that's currently there. They might, they may know how the infrastructure is supported, um, and the size of it and, and, you know. In respect to the small gym, right, so lots of things to look at, so I agree.
So at the top of page five is the motion that was, was left there.
Counselor Smith will do motion to table the old Hart, the old Hartland Arena scoreboard request until further investigation can be done by staff. I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded, concerning question. Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Date of our next meetings, February eleventh for a regular council meeting, February twenty fifth for our committee of the whole. Um, I would entertain a motion to move into closed session.
Your worship, may I address council and, and help, get some help from Jed to just ask one item. Years ago, uh, an association in Fredericton initiated a program. Where they placed. In two towns, uh, a plaque. One being Hartland and for Richard Hatfield and one being for Louis Robichaud. Were past premiers of the province. And it was placed at Hartland next to. Uh, the recreation center, the.
Tourism center here.
Yes, and it is no longer there and it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Jed, and I'm not finding fault or picking here. But it is in the building that you're talking about moving, laying on the floor here, or was. Or if you know, do you know where it is?
Sign or?
The sign for Richard Hatfield.
So, uh, Director there contacted.
Ah.
Uh, a company uh just last week.
Good.
About resurfacing and you're in contact, he went to speak to us.
Yeah, so um, I did reach out, I reached out to the family to um, let them know that the sign had been removed because it was deteriorating. And the face of it was peeling off.
Yes.
And it was to the point where it was going to start breaking the actual image of Richard Hatfield. Uh, so uh, Public Works Department took that sign down, it is safely, it's not laying on the floor, it's propped up. Um, safely in the public works um, building and um, I did have A and D Communications look at it when they were in. Last week and she's going to give a quote on what it will cost to reface both sides, because we don't have the graphics, it wasn't created.
By the capital commission.
It was created by a provincial commission that no longer exists, um, so. She's going to see if she can recreate the graphics, what it would cost for her to do that, and, and then we'll be able to look at, does Hartland have. Like, I'll work with the treasurer to see, does Hartland have the funds to be able to consider doing that? Or maybe it's something that the family want to undertake, cause we could certainly put it back up, um, it's.
It's actually part of the promenade of premiers, and it was more than two premiers, it was every branch of premier. Those were, were posted in the premier's hometown, or as close to it as possible. And uh, it was funded by the capital commission in Fredericton, but I think now. Anything to do with that would be through protocol office. And protocol office. And Richard Hatfield and Louis Robichaud were the first two that were placed in the province and I, the reason I bring it up is I would dearly love to see it. Installed back where it was and. And thank you, I appreciate it very much.
I'll make a motion to move to closed session.
Can I stand here please?
Closed session. Closed session. Well, adjournment is what we were doing was.
Adjourn to a close.
Adjourn to a close, yeah. I'll second that, councillor Smith.
We've done exactly the same during the closed session, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.